And thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get going. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Tiedum? Lorick?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Nichols?
Paulson?
Here.
Black?
Here. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Tamela and Carson representing the Buddhist faith? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's one of my favorite people, but mostly because of the dogs.
Every time I come, that's in the report. Just as the soft rains fill the streams, pour into the rivers, and join together in the oceans, so may the power of every moment of your goodness flow forth to awaken and heal all beings, those here now, those gone before, those yet to come. By the power of, by the power of every moment of your goodness, may your heart's wishes be soon fulfilled, as completely shining as the bright full moon, as magically as by a wish-filling gem. May all... I printed it this time. May all obstacles be averted and desire and disease be gone. May no obstacle come across your way. May you enjoy fulfillment and long life. For all in whose heart dwells respect, who follow the wisdom and compassion of the way, may your life prosper in the four blessings of old age, beauty, happiness, and strength.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do love her. Tamela is literally one of my favorites, and I do love the dogs, so thank you for always bringing them. They didn't bark at me the whole time. They were really good. Shocking. We'll move to agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes for the following meetings. Clarification and regular city council meetings of November 7 and November 21, 2024, and work session meeting of November 14, 2024. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for a period of November 16 through 30, 2024. C, treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for October 2024 showing cash and investments as of October 31, 2024. D, civil service commission reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jonathan Farnsworth to continue serving as a member of the civil service commission. Jonathan's term will begin December 7, 2024, and expire December 7, 2030. E, construction board of appeals and reviews appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Glenn Powell to serve as a member of the construction board of appeals and review and review, replacing Richard Nielsen, whose term expired. Glenn's term will begin January 1, 2025, and expire December 31, 2026. F, council decision vacation of easement for 1837 and 1846 Wayfair Street. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a vacation of an abandoning abandonment abandonment of the public's interest in the an existing 30-foot-wide access and utility easement located at 1837 and 1846 Wayfair Wayfair Street, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the consent agenda item number three, items A through F.
Second.
We have a motion by council president Lurick and a second by council member Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is proclamations. We have one proclamation, Zonta Club Day of Action, and it will be read by council member Mansfield.
Whereas the Zonta Club of Pocatello, having been in continuous existence since 1981, is a member of Zonta International District Eight, recognizes the crime of violence against women and girls, continues to be the most pervasive human rights violation and a global epidemic, and is due to systematic use of physical, emotional, verbal, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and does not know any national or cultural barriers affecting millions of women and girls of all races and socioeconomic backgrounds in peacetime and conflict, and violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity, and results in serious short-term and long-term physical, sexual, reproductive, and mental health problems. And whereas Zonta International is a leading or global organization of professionals with more than 26,000 members in 62 countries working together to make gender equality a worldwide reality for women and girls, and has contributed to help achieve a world free of violence against women and girls for more than 100 years. And whereas during the 16 Days of Activism, November 25 through December 10, the Zonta Club of Pocatello, along with all Zonta Clubs, are encouraged to take part in the Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women campaign, and to take local, national, and international actions to influence the making and implementation of laws, as well as changing of gender-based attitudes and behaviors to end violence against women and girls. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim December 5, 2024, to be Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women Day in Pocatello, and urge citizens of Pocatello to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community, to advocate for survivors of gender-based violence, and to act in service on their behalf.
I think you all should come up.
That's the idea.
I'm gonna pass by for a second. Picture? Will you take picture? Hold it for a second.
I'm gonna stop past while you...
Should we take our pictures?
Here, who gets this? Yeah, we should take a picture.
That'd be you right now. I'll take it when you're done. Okay. Is everybody in?
Is the science straight?
Thanks, man. Richard needs to be answered. Take a bunch. You're good.
If you'd like to say something, you're welcome to.
Oh, thank you very much. Anybody want to speak? You want me to speak? Just, um... Molly's speech. Um, thank you all, you guys.
Molly, Molly, can you do the camera on this side and talk to the council?
Thank you. Sorry. You think I never do this? Like, for a living or something? Thank you, guys. Thank you for your support. Thank our officers in the room for their support. They do a lot in our community to protect our women and girls, so just thank you for doing this annually. We really appreciate it.
Super, thank you. Zonta is a great organization, so thank you for doing what you do. We'll move to agenda item five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. December 12, 9:00 a.m., we'll, uh, city council work session. December 19, 5:30 p.m., city council clarification meeting. 6:00 p.m., regular city council meeting. January 2, uh, city council clarification meeting, and, uh, six, at 5:30, at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. Other events, food for fines at Marshall Public Library through December 14. For every non-perishable food item donated, patrons can have their fines forgiven up by $1. Please contact the library for more information. The Marshall Public Library has shortened service hours in December. The hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The library will be closed December 24 and 25. For the Christmas holiday, regular hours will be returned on July, or January 2. Would have been a long, July would have been a long close. Looking ahead, city offices will be closed December 25 for the Christmas holiday and January 1 for the New Year's Day holiday. Garbage and recycle pickups will be delayed by one day. Community Recreation Center will be closed on the following dates for the holidays, December 24 and 5, and December 31, and January 1. City Creek Recreation Area gates are closed to motorized access until approximately May 15, 2025. As a reminder, to please keep your sidewalks clear of snow and ice. When clearing sidewalks and driveways of snow, please do not place the snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number six, National Park Service, NPS, Save America's Treasures Grant application for Brady Chapel restoration and repair. Council may wish to approve a grant application for the National Parks Service, NPS, Save America's Treasures Grant, Brady Chapel Restoration and Repair Project, and approve expenditure of the required match amount, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. The total project cost is $399,327 and requires a 50% match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve agenda item six, the, um, National Park Service, Save America's Treasures Grant application for the Brady Trap Chapel Restoration and Repair. Sorry, I can't speak English. Um, and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by council president Lurick and a second by council member Mansfield. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, Flock Group Incorporated License Plate Recognition Services Agreement and Sole Source Declaration, Police Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a contract with Flock Group Incorporated to provide automated license plate readers technology to capture data associated with vehicle license plates for law enforcement and authorize the sole source procurement, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, following the required 14-day waiting period, subject to legal department review. Funds for the implementation of the program are available in FY 2025 police department budget, and ongoing expense will be included in appropriate, in the appropriate operating budgets.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Before councilwoman Lurick's question, I would like to move that we approve agenda item seven, Flock Group Inc., License Plate Recognition Service Agreement and Sole Source Declaration for the Police Department.
Second.
Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, and we have a number of questions for our police department, so... How are you?
I'm doing well. Zach Barci, Forte Police Department.
Okay, I know that there's a couple of questions. Let's start here. Linda?
Okay. I would like to hear about how we're sort of moving forward with this program if we approve it. If you could talk a little bit about, uh, we had talked in the work session about department policies, um, and where those stand, and maybe the, the training, and just kind of how, what are the next steps in the procedure? If you could talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so, uh, if approved, there's two tiers. Flock would set up the time and place to put the cameras in location, but before anything's turned on and ready to go, we have policy that would be set in place, and included in that policy is that there would be overseers of the technology and information, and that all officers that receive accounts, the whole department would be trained, uh, with the Flock system.
And could you talk a little bit about, uh, because I know there's some concerns, I mean, council have expressed, and also for other people in the community, about the issue of privacy and, uh, sort of saving information, and what, whether you do that, and for how long, and what you do with it, and how it's saved?
Yeah, well, let me, you know, I want to share a little bit of a letter from the founder and CEO, Garrett Langley. This is very pertinent, especially to the communities, but he says, "Our approach is working across the country today in thousands of cities across 47 states in partnership with thousands of law enforcement agencies. We're seeing communities using Flock safety technology to reduce their crime rates, return kidnapping victims safely to their families, take illegal weapons off the street, and return stolen property valued in the tens of millions. This progress gives renewed energy to detectives and patrol officers and create trust between law enforcement and the communities they serve. Moreover, Flock Safety views privacy, transparency, and accountability as a primary directive, and we will continue to do so in perpetuity." And I know that that is very important, that, you know, this is something that will help us solve crime and, uh, make sure to keep the community safer. And, uh, as far as the system goes, it's not saved it for over 30 days unless there's a crime that is found and we take a, a picture from the system and put it into a report number, right? But it'd be no different than if you go to robbery, right? You take a photograph, that's saved and with our reports, so...
But that would be one image from...
Correct.
You know, however much data, and you would take that and treat that as a piece of evidence in the same way you would do the robbery or anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Council member Mansfield, you had some questions?
Yeah. The first one, some of the concerns that I saw online were the fact that these images could be accessed by outside agencies, so we capture the data in our city, and then, for example, Wyoming wants to investigate a crime, and they can go into this storage database of images in order to access our imagery as well. Is that correct?
So what is going on is the Flock system, and there's Flock cameras all up I-15 and all through Utah and Idaho, right? They can talk to each other, so if you have, say there's a white vehicle with a license plate that commits crimes in Twin Falls, travels through Pocatello, and then ends in Ogden, Utah, right?
True.
For say?
Yeah.
Then we can track that vehicle and the route that they took, and if you wanted to try and use that as part of an investigation, and that became helpful, then, then other agencies could use that as part of their investigation.
What's the process by which Ogden Police, for example, or Twin Falls Police, whichever in this example, would access our Flock cameras or data?
So there's a, when you get the Flock system, there's checks that you can say, yes, I'm willing to share with other agencies, and the same with us, right? Like, we want to know if we have drugs coming up from Utah or over from, you know, the west side of the state or whatever, uh, if we're wanting to share information so we can help solve crimes, so we would, we would want to share our information, and we'd ask other of these license plate readers, right, and the departments that have them to share their information with us.
How are these functionally different than intersection cameras? Because don't most of our intersections just have...
Yes, that's a great...
Generalized cameras?
That's a great question. So intersection cameras are just recording the whole intersection, right? And if someone's walking past the intersection, they're either live streaming or they're recording some, some are set up differently. These specifically are tailored that they're getting just the back of the vehicle. So they're getting the back of the vehicle, they're getting the license plate, and so you can make out what the vehicle, make, model, and the license plate is, and that's what it's storing. It's not storing anything else, so we're not looking at facial recognition, or we're not looking at anything other than the back of the vehicle, and we're also doing it on open roads, so it's common areas, so we're not violating anyone's Fourth Amendment rights. It's, uh, public property.
Jared, if I could direct a question to you as well, if that's okay? There are multiple cases currently against cities for warrantless use of surveillance. Do you have any concerns about the legal ramifications that this might have on the city of Pocatello?
No, I've, I've looked into a lot of those cases. The only case that is, would be relevant to, uh, what we're looking at here is just barely filed earlier this year. It hasn't gone anywhere, and quite honestly, I don't think there's a lot of merit to that case, based on other cases that I've looked at in this similar, uh, category.
Can you describe why some of those cases have been, either have they have already been dismissed, or why you believe that they will be? Because at the end of the day, you're the one who has to defend...
Correct.
...these cases. So like, on what grounds do you believe that this is something that you feel comfortable? Because you always say, "I don't want to be the test, the test example in the, in the state or county or what have you."
Sure.
So, so what makes you comfortable about this, based on the other things that you've seen?
Basically, without getting into the specifics of the cases, because I can't do that from memory, but, uh, basically, it's based on the fact that it has been tried in other places. The courts have looked at it. The images that are being taken are within the public domain. There's not an expectation of privacy when you're driving on a public road, and nothing that I see in what we're talking about with Flock is outside of any of those parameters that the courts have said, "You're absolutely within your Fourth Amendment rights to do that." It's not a search, it's not a seizure, uh, it's not an invasion of privacy, and therefore a warrant is not required.
Okay, thank you.
So, real quick, this, these cameras only take a picture of the back of the car...
Correct.
Doesn't take a picture of people in the vehicle?
Nope.
Just the car itself and the license plate.
The back, the back of the car and the license plate is what it's focused on, right? So it can get the back of the vehicle, uh, make, model, but it's focusing on the license plate area, so we're not looking at faces or occupants in the vehicle, stuff like that.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you, Josh. Were you...
That's good. That was it for me.
Okay. And, uh, council member Paulson?
Yeah, I do have some concerns, and regardless of the legality with the Fourth Amendment, the privacy concerns are still big, and how it's affecting cities. For example, in Espaniola, New Mexico, a Flock camera misread a license plate. A 21-year-old and her 12-year-old sister were held at gunpoint with an undisclosed payout from the city. In Aurora, Colorado, police mistakenly detained Brittany Gilliam and her four children, including a six-year-old, at gunpoint and handcuffed the children with a $2 million payout. And in Kansas, a police lieutenant used it to track his estranged wife. Like, when I asked the representatives, they said there really wasn't any issues, but after reading about it, there seems to be across the country, and that really does concern me for Pocatello to implement this. It's, I guess it's not really a question, it's just a statement, but...
Kind of a statement, all right? Any other questions? Council member Mangum?
So off of those concerns, um, the policy that we're looking at drafting around this, how does that, how does that detract these issues from what we're looking to do here in Pocatello?
Well, and not knowing exactly the cases that council member Paulson is talking about, it sounds like that there were mistakes made, whether it was through the law enforcement side, or it was through, um, ITD or the registration side. I can tell you, mistakes happen. We're all human, right? We had a, an incident where a vehicle got stolen, and there was a baby inside, right? Well, it took us a while to figure out what that vehicle was, because when it got registered, she told us it was red, but it got registered as white, right? So vehicles, uh, there's so many hands that it go, that goes through, mistakes can be made. Our policy specifically will be created to make sure that we're doing the best we can to train and to give our people the information they need to handle everything appropriately, and to keep the communities as safe as possible.
So follow up to that. Will there be, um, where there'll be one sole person who's kind of the person who's over, obviously the chief is here, but is there somebody who will be, this is their domain? Flock is your thing. We're gonna go through, um, you, Barci, we're gonna go through you specifically. Everything related to Flock will go through you, and you have oversight, or is it at the discretion of each officer who's using?
So it's, uh, it, things change, right? As time, so right now, I would be, for the department, kind of the Flock LPR expert along with our crime analyst, right? However, that doesn't mean that in a couple weeks, we might say, hey, this is the way that we want the structure to change, because now that we're implementing this and doing it, so it's a, it's a work in progress. We don't want to, uh, but we will make sure that it has good structure, and that it has oversight, and that it has accountability along with audits yearly.
I think the, the question is, will we always have one person that is over it, not you until the day you retire, and then somebody else steps in?
There will be at least one person that'll be over it.
Okay. So last follow-up, um, and this might be more for legal. Say there's an incident, and someone uses our footage from our Flock cameras, say in Ogden, um, and there's a lawsuit against the Ogden Police Department. The people and whoever, the citizen wins that lawsuit, but they used our footage. Is there any implication on the, on behalf of the city of Pocatello because they used our footage in this lawsuit?
I don't think it's very likely that we would be implicated in that and have any liability, um, unless we were assisting Ogden in that investigation, in that arrest, and something went wrong with one of our officers, but that's a very unlikely scenario. So I think just sharing that information, where, I don't want to say we're completely immune from liability, but it's a very low likelihood that we would have exposure in that situation.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Mansfield?
In the healthcare world, when accessing HIPAA information typically, uh, at least in major health networks, um, user access is monitored, so if I were to go in and check for a chart, um, it would mark that my username was logged in, timestamp and date that I accessed this patient's chart. Does, uh, does Flock do anything similar if, if we do have someone who goes in to use it?
Yeah.
But we see who does and why, and like, what they looked at?
Yeah, they do have a monitoring system. I can't give all the details of that system, but I know that, uh, part of the audit process is that monitoring system, to make sure that there's checks and balances.
Okay. Direction towards mayor and Jared, there, I know that at times there are different departmental policies that come before the council, so my understanding, and Zach would be a part of this as well, so we don't have our fully fleshed-out policy of how our department is going to utilize this. From what, the way you're speaking, is that correct?
We have a policy that is drafted, ready, ready to go, yes.
Okay.
Legal has also looked at it.
Would the adoption of that policy be included in this resolution? No?
No, I, if I may, mayor.
Absolutely.
I think this is one of those situations where it's an interdepartmental policy that would be best left to the department itself. There are certain policies that the council sees, the personnel policy, financial policies.
Right.
But there's a lot of interdepartmental policies where I think the council should leave it up to the subject matter experts within that department to develop that policy. Like Officer Barci said, we've looked at this policy, legal's looked at the policy. I think we're this close to actually implementing it within the department, but I don't think that's something that council should, um, be the approving body for. And I will, if I may, um, to council member Paulson's, uh, statements earlier, excuse me, having looked at that policy, I can tell you that a lot of those instances, and there, there are instances online that you can find where Flock has been abused and misused, and there's been problems that have occurred. The policy that's, that's looking at being adopted in the very near future by the police department, obviously, a policy can't prevent people from violating it, but it can, uh, give guidelines and, and give, um, guidance on how to use any system within the city that won't lead to situations like that, and most of those situations would be outside of this policy or are a violation of this policy. And so it's, it's hope that that would remediate any possibility that something like that were to happen here.
Okay, council member Mangum?
So, my line of questioning is not in, um, objection to this, to using this service. I think this is a great idea. I think it's a great service. I think that, um, being that we are where we are as the gate city, that there's a lot of drugs and trafficking and other things that come through our area, and anything that we can do to deter that or to detract people from coming and bringing that here, I'm 100% in favor of that, because we have to do our due diligence to protect the community and the citizens who live within. And so I'm in favor of it. But I do like the idea of having some checks and balances, and we do have to do our due diligence to protect people also from us, if you will. And so, but with that, I did make the motion that we do approve.
Can I, can I just say real fast that along with that, I do appreciate the checks and balances, and we, as the police department, take, uh, utmost importance, the fact that we want to make sure that our community trusts us, right? And, uh, you know, Chief Shai talks all the time about we wouldn't want to tarnish the badge, so we, we take this very seriously.
You, council, council president?
Similarly to what Corey just said, I, um, you know, I've thought a lot about this because we do have to take issues of, you know, potential abuses and privacy matters, and all of those things very seriously, um, and I, I think we do, and, and we have, and you had told me before this meeting that you have a policy ready to go, you, um, have it with you, um, and you've thought a lot about how we would implement this and not, you know, set it up to have those kind of abuses and those kind of problems, and, um, and now I'm hearing our attorney feels comfortable with that, too, so I, I think what we are having to balance is, you know, all of those concerns that we've talked about versus what this will allow you to do in protecting and serving the community, and, um, I feel confident that we're, you know, we've got good people with good policies, and we're legally strong, in a, in a strong position, that it makes it worth it when we think about the people that we can save, that we can help, the, you know, the crimes that we can solve, um, with this technology, so I am very much in support as well, and I'm also knowing a lot of you in our police department, I know how important that is to you, too, to, to get this right, and, and to not tarnish the badge, as the chief would say, so, um, I have confidence that you guys will, um, use the technology to do all the good things and minimize any of those concerns that people have, so thank you for coming up with this, I mean, bringing it forward to us.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by, uh, Mangum, and a second by Lurick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to agenda item eight. Declaration of Surplus Property and Request to Dispose of Nitten X... of Knighton XLP 303A XRF Analyzer. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of Planning and Development Services staff and declare the, declare one Nixon XLP 303A XRF Analyzer as surplus property and that cannot be sold at a public auction, and approve the disposition of the, of the equipment in accordance with Nuclear Regulatory Commission and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Guidelines, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Councilmember Mansfield, I got my attention.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the Declaration of Surplus Property and disposal of the Knighton Analyzer as outlined in Agenda Item Number Eight.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Paulson. Aubriana, can you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Airport Disadvantaged Business, Airport Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Plan Adoption. Council may wish to approve Airport Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Plan and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, including minor administrative changes to the plan as needed, subject to legal department review. Adoption of the revision is a requirement by the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Airport Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Plan, or adopted, I should say, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Nine, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. I heard, I heard Cory doing it, so I've got his initial here, and you jumped in.
He didn't make it though.
So we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mansfield. That was aggressive. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
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 Agenda Item Ten, Bid Acceptance and Award Mountain View Cemetery Water Line Replacement.
Council may wish to award the construction, the construction bid for the Mountain View Cemetery Water Line Replacement Project to Allied Underground Technology in the amount of $1,236,134, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total. Subject to legal department review, funding for the project is available in the FY 2025 Water Department Budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the bid acceptance and award for the Mountain View Cemetery Water Line Replacement as outlined in Agenda Item Number Ten, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Those long pauses get me, I'm like...
It's killing me. I'm going to give it to you, Mangum, but you better speed it up a little bit if you're going to get a second out of here. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Wastewater Collection Systems Master Plan Update Task Order Number Three, Consor. Council may wish to approve an agreement with Consor for the completion of the wastewater collection system master plan update with a total contract price of $298,104, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval of the agreement with Censor for the wastewater completion, wastewater collection system master plan update, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, including change orders up to 5%, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have, we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Piggyback Bid Acceptance, Water Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a piggyback bid of the city of Boise's co-op contract via Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the purchase of one 2025 Ford T350 Transit Cargo Van in the amount of $62,785 for the Water Department, and if approved, authorize the mayor's signature on all documents pertaining to the purchase, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the piggyback bid acceptance for the Water Department as outlined in Agenda Item Number Twelve, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Thirteen, Piggyback Bid and Acceptance, Police Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve the piggyback bid of the city of Boise's co-op contract with Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the purchase of four 2025 Pursuit Rated Ford Interceptor SUVs at $49,777 each, for a total procurement cost of $199,108 for the Police Department, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval of the piggyback bid for the, for 2025 Pursuit Rated Ford Interceptors, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen, Piggyback Bid Acceptance, Water Pollution Control. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a piggyback bid of the Sourcewell Contract Number 060920 contract via Jackson Group Peterbilt for the purchase of one new Peterbilt 567 cab and chassis in the amount of $169,986, with a trade-in or transfer value of $37,500, for a total expenditure of $132,486, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the piggyback bid acceptance for water pollution control as outlined in Agenda Item Number Fourteen, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fifteen, Items from the Audience. This time, it's been sad to see to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent, subsequent agenda. You must sign in in order to, at the start of the meeting, in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's 15 minutes for this, and three minutes per speaker. Nikki Taisom. I don't see her here, looks like she left, so we will move to Agenda Item Sixteen. Thank you very much for being here, being with us tonight. Thank you, council, for your work. With that, we are adjourned.